We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer? Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move the council, excuse the absent council member.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Prince, a council excuse, council member Breyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to a special presentation, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you very much, I'll just set this up here. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I feel privileged to be before you today. I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator, and I want to present to you the Public Works Department Employees of the Year and also the recipient of our Good Teamwork Award. As you know, the Public Works Department is made up of three divisions. The Maintenance Services Division is responsible for maintaining streets, our piped utility systems, and also the city's vehicle fleet. The Transportation Systems Division is responsible for designing and building our capital impro- our transportation capital improvement projects, acquiring grants to build those projects, and also managing the Renton Municipal Airport and maintaining our signal and streetlight infrastructure. The Utility Systems Division is responsible for designing and building and planning our- for our piped utilities, including our water system, and also managing our solid waste contract with Waste Management. The reason I'm bringing that up is because the way we select our Employees of the Year is that we have one Employee of the Year for each one of the three divisions. And the Employees of the Year are nominated, the candidates are nominated, from their coworkers. Their brought- the nominations are brought forward and selected by a selection team that also organizes our annual employee recognition picnic. The picnic this year occurred on August 22nd, and Mr. Mayor, thank you, and those of you from the council that were able to join us at the picnic. And we, as every year, we have some very deserving employees that were selected, one from each of the three divisions. So without any further ado, I will move forward with them. First of all, from Maintenance Services, we have Jason Grant.
Jason, if you want to step forward. Right up here.
And Jason serves as our street pavement management technician, and he's responsible for rating all of the city's streets. We have a zero to 100 rating, and he's responsible for making sure we rate those streets accurately and then put them in their proper order so that we can do surface treatment overlays and rehabilitation projects. And he manages our annual pavement overlay contract every year, and also our arterial rehabilitation programs, which together are well over $1.5 million worth of work. Jason's coworkers that nominated him had this to say about him. "Jason is one in a million coworker, his positive and fun attitude is infectious, Jason has an excellent work ethic and is always willing to help with the phones and anything asked of him over and above his job description without complaint or discontent. Even with a heavy workload, Jason always has a smile on his face and a can-do attitude." And that's certainly been my experience with Jason as well. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to step down here, we can award him his Public Works Employee of the Year award plaque. So, Jason, if you want to say a good word, a few couple words, you have an opportunity now.
Well, I just wanted to state that I've been here since 2000. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. I'm hoping to do another 20, 30 more years, because I really enjoy working for the city.
Excellent, thanks.
Next, if you want to stick here, you can, because we might have a photo opportunity coming up. From the Transportation Systems Division, our winner this year, the Employee of the Year, is Ryan Zuloff. All of you, of course, know Ryan. Ryan, please come forward. Ryan Sun Cole is in attendance today. Ryan is the manager of the Renton Municipal Airport with his six-person staff and intermittent assistants. Ryan is responsible for operating and maintaining the airport, managing the tenants and the tenant leases, and building needed CIP projects. The airport has been an extremely busy place of late, as you know, with the ramp-up for the production of- the increased production of the 737s, with the major Boeing project to rebuild the North Boeing Bridge. It's been very interesting, and it's been incredibly intense coordinating all of these activities at once at the airport, plus our major taxiway Bravo paving project, and it's going flawlessly. So, great job, Ryan. Ryan's coworkers had this to say about him, which is somewhat covering the same ground about the work that's being done successfully. "In the last year, the airport has addressed several significant issues and accomplished several large capital projects. Many of these projects Ryan accomplished personally, and others were accomplished under his leadership. The airport has taken on these challenges and successfully responded. These extraordinary assignments have all been accomplished in addition to the airport normal operating responsibilities. The tasks included addressing the tower closure sequestration issue, which we're not sure we're quite done with yet, but so far, so good. ACE Aviation lease negotiations, completion of the airport sustainability master plan, Boeing North Bridge reconstruction, Apron Bravo activation, Taxiway Bravo reconstruction, and the seaplane base dredging project." So, thank you very much, Ryan, and the mayor will award your-
Come on up.
Come right here for me? There he is.
Good job.
Well, I just want to say, you know, this award is really an honor. We've been working very hard over the years to really build an airport that the community can feel proud of, and that really accentuates the positive aspects in our community, and so hopefully we'll continue to work on that in the future. And I will say, by the way, and I work with- I have the pleasure of working with some really great people out at the airport, and without them, I couldn't do what I could do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Next, from Utility Systems, it's Ebbe Bernardo. Unfortunately, Ebbe can't be here with us today, but I want to read what her coworkers had to say about her. She's from the Utility Systems Division. She's an engineer in the stormwater group, and Ebbe has been instrumental in the drafting of the city's new surface water regulations to comply with our National Pollution Discharge Effluent Standards, while also managing several important capital improvement projects. Ebbe's coworkers have this to say about her. "Ebbe has been responsible for drafting the new stormwater specifications to comply with the NPDES permit and Renton Surface Water Design Manual. As a component of this task, she has served as the author, trainer, and technical resource for the new requirements. Ebbe has been outstanding in this role, consistently helpful, positive to those new to the regulations, very professional in her work with customers. She's really helped us, especially in our transition to these new rules with the development community, because it's kind of a new paradigm for them as far as what the surface water standards are for development projects. So, she's been instrumental and helped make it go very smoothly." Our next award, and last one, is the Public Works Department Good Teamwork Award. We had- we always have some competitive projects and programs to look at that are nominated. This year, the 2013 Good Teamwork Award goes to the Rainier Avenue Improvement Project and all the people that worked on that. As you know, this is a $42 million project. It's three months ahead of schedule, so we're not going to have to finish it off in spring like we thought. We think we're going to be done with it late November, early December, substantially complete, which is ahead of schedule. You probably all know- noticed that the pavement was installed on three evenings last week, so we have the pavement installed there. It's a little bit non-traditional how we're doing that. We're installing the pavement, and we're going to saw-cut out the median and put in abstruded curbs, because it saves time and money to do it that way. So, all of the median work will come in the following weeks. We had quite a few people that were involved in this project. As a matter of fact, one of our challenges in establishing this award was determining who we were going to recognize, because there were nearly 100 employees that had something to do with this project, from top to bottom, from all of the departments. And so during our award lunch in August, we were able to winnow it down to about 50 employees that made major contributions. Those employees represented Public Works Department, Community and Economic Development, Community Services, the City Attorney's Office, and the Police and Fire Departments. So, we did a recognition in- during the August recognition lunch for all of the departments. This time, tonight, in recognition of the amount of time we have, what I decided to do is recognize of those 50, the five or six people that were really the center of planning the project, acquiring the grant funds for it, and making the project work from the Transportation Systems Division. So, those five are- I don't think I saw Bob Hanson. Is he here? No, Bob's not here. We've got Chris Barnes. Chris, if you want to come forward. He's, of course, our Transportation Operations Manager. Jim Seitz, our Transportation Planning Supervisor. He and Juliana Frye's got us the money for this project, and it's like a jigsaw puzzle of different money sources. Eric Cutshall, the Transportation Maintenance Supervisor. Eric, if you want to come on forward. And last, but certainly not least, is Derek Atkinson, who's the project manager. So, Derek. So, I want to thank you all for being really at the center of this $42 million project and making it all work, so I'm going to shake your hand.
We're almost done with the project.
That we've got going. So, thank you all, and in closing, Mr. Mayor and council members, I want to thank you for your ongoing support, sponsorship, and making all of this possible, all of the things that- the services that we provide every day, the public works projects, programs, and also all of your support for the staff. We're very appreciative of that. And I also want to express my appreciation to the other department staff members who weren't recognized today, but every day they contribute to the livability and the success of the city, so I want to thank them for their efforts as well. So, next year, we'll be here and do it again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Okay. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll move on to audience comment. We have several people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes, the timer's next to the city clerk. First is Sam Bellomio. Did I pronounce that right, Sam?
Close. It's Sam Bellomio.
Bellomio.
Yep. And so, you know, I've been coming to speak to you about King County has their-
Excuse me, would you give your city of residence?
Definitely. So, I'm with Stand Up America. Our address is P.O. Box 4222, Seattle, Washington, 98104, and my name is Sam Bellomio. So, I'm coming to speak to you today because I've been having a conversation with the city count- sorry, with the King County Council, trying to get them to open up their committees, and I've been asking you to help me in that dialogue as well. And I was wondering, did any of you contact them, or any of you guys trying to do this on behalf of the citizens? This is important, because we as citizens don't have the instrument we created anymore. We have bureaucrats in office that don't know how to move on behalf of the citizens. You're afraid to rock the boat, because that boat gives you a nice position, gives you prestige in the community, so you don't want to rock the boat with the people who put you in here. But, you know, we need you guys to start doing something and work on behalf of the citizens, because you were once citizens before you became bureaucrats. We need you to start doing things as telling King County Council that your committee should be open to all citizens. You know, Pierce County actually has a citizen forum on every meeting where citizens can openly address them about issues that they're concerned with. It's in their charter to require it. And on top of that, they're required to hold their council meetings-
Excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman?
His face.
I need you to sit down and not interrupt.
All right, so- Exactly. I'll address that in a second, Alex. So, they hold their meetings in their districts, so King County has nine districts, and they hold all their meetings during work hours. By Pierce County's charter, they're supposed to hold off-work hours, and one in each district, so that way citizens can participate. King County doesn't do this. And I see this little trick you're doing with the camera. I don't know- I know my ass looks good, but I wish my face would be shown, because, you know, this is trickery, you know? When you show someone and not- it's bad TV. It's- you guys are doing this. You have control of this department. Why is it showing the backside of citizens when they speak? Can you have them change it back?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
The idea of audience comment is for you to address the council-
Is my time up?
-and not be on TV. So, that's- you need to look this way.
Uh-huh, I am.
Our goal is not to have you on camera. Our goal is to have you speak to us-
But you're making it about the camera. You're on TV right now, your face is being shown while you talk.
I'm a councilman and you're not.
Thank you for showing- this is the problem. I mean, you're exhibiting the issue that we have as citizens, that you're somehow up here. Are they showing me up? They're somehow up here, and we're down here. I don't get why you guys are manipulating the system to make citizens that stand up and say, "Hey, we think something's wrong." You're manipulating the system to be like, "This guy is an idiot. This guy is nothing. We're just going to show the backside in the whole time." I watched the video. You show all people who speak.
That's not true, and it doesn't matter, you're not going to control-
Pause my time, please.
Well, it's not about pausing your time. If you don't have something constructive to address the council with, then you should just go ahead and sit down.
But I do, and if you're going to interrupt me, please pause my time, because I- you give me five minutes about you talking, you're taking away that five minutes, you're not giving me equal rights to speak. You know, you're- again, it's another trick used by the Nazis or the communists to control the dialogue. Look, we're inside the rules. What's that? I'm comparing a government by the acts on behalf of their self-interest and not the citizens' interest. I'm talking about how if everyone says, "My city's doing good, and my city's doing good, my county's doing good, my county's doing good, my state's doing good, my state's doing good," who's doing wrong when we had a recession in 2008? Do you guys even remember that happened? This is what I'm talking about. And you guys showing the backside of me, it's very true. I've been watching your videos. It's not like I just came here one day. I understand how your council works. So, you guys need to wake up King County and have them work on behalf of us. They need to start holding their meetings in your town, in other towns outside of downtown Seattle, off-work hours so citizens can participate, opening up their council meetings so that way citizens can openly address them without threat of arrest, without any threat at all, without being in their car being towed, without their freedom of speech being infringed upon because you want to interrupt the citizens without pausing their time, and showing the backside of them the whole time they're speaking. I love this. This is substantive to you, the council, because you could change this. I don't know any other TV producer that would show in- at the room full when the speaker's speaking. Do they do that with Obama, the whole time he's speaking, they just show the crowd? They don't even show him speaking at all. I'm here to present to you what my issues are, and you're doing image trickery, you know, showing the backside of a citizen while he speaks. I can finish the last two minutes, or minute I have left, just to talk about how ridiculous this is. I asked, "Why did they do this?" And they, "Oh, it was told. I was told to do that." So, they- I was- it was openly admitted that they were told not to show my face. Why? Because my sign? Should I hold my sign up this way, the way it's on TV? You think that's why I want it? It's down by the side. I don't want anyone to see it. I wanted to speak to you. You guys are just showing the backside of me to make a mockery of this whole process.
Are you trying to speak to the camera, or are you speaking to the council?
I thought I was speaking to you.
Well, if you're speaking to us, we're looking at you and we're listening.
I'm speaking to you, but this-
We're listening to you for five minutes every week.
Every week?
I don't understand what you're complaining about.
I'm complaining because you're- because the camera's used for the citizens. Okay, yes, okay. This is supposed to be documented records of the council meeting, right? So, yeah, I want to be documented.
You are being documented.
Yeah, the backside of me is being documented. That's the problem. You guys could change it. You could stop it right now, and none of you want to do it, because it's a game to you. This whole process is a game to you. You're bureaucrats. You don't work on behalf of the citizens. I actually thought, when I came down here, I'd have an ear that would listen to my concerns. Instead, what I found is a bunch of the same thing, the same aristocrats that run every other county council, I mean. You guys are the same. You're stuck in a process. You can't stand up and wake up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corman.
Well, you know, I didn't know anything about the camera, I still don't-
Neither I, just found out, Alex.
But I was going to say, you know, there is- we do have public access TV, and you do get access.
I'm not- my goal isn't to get-
I mean, I don't think our ratings are necessarily any better than public access.
I know, exactly.
You could reserve a half hour and bring everybody on and get in any position with any camera angles that you choose. And in effect, this is sort of our equivalent of public access to talk about us doing the business of the city of Renton.
Mm-hmm. And so, when the speakers up there, they get the camera, right?
Well, the challenge is that, I mean, what you're doing, week after week, is starting to threaten our ability to do the business of the city of Renton, because we have other speakers that want to talk to us about Renton city activities, and, you know, you want to come and complain about the King County Council. I think a good way to do that would be on public access TV.
But I'm not complaining, I'm asking you to do something. You have the authority. We bestowed upon you the responsibility, and you're not doing it.
Well, you know, what I was kind of alluding to last time we talked was-
What?
The county's big place. I can't remember what the population is, a couple million, one and a half million?
There's 2 million people.
2 million people?
Yep.
So, if you came and you said you wanted to speak to Congress, for instance, you wanted to go on the floor of the House of Representatives-
I'm not talking about Congress, I'm talking about our county.
I wouldn't be able to get you access. With a population of 2 million, it's still pretty hard to say, "Hey, I want to have access to these people every day," because not every- there just wouldn't be enough minutes in the day for everybody to have access. So, I had suggested, well, you might try-
You're saying citizens shouldn't have the ability to address their representatives?
I'm, you know, I was saying, I think, a week or two ago when we talked, that of all the battles that I'd like to fight with King County, I'm not sure that that's one of them. I mean, I certain- there's things that the county does that I don't like also.
So, when are we going to change it? When can we work together to do that?
Well, I'm just saying that I think going to them and holding up your signs and talking- I don't think that that's going to change their behavior. I mean, the way you influence the behavior is you engage in elections, you could put your own materials out, you can try and influence public opinion.
But they're showing you on TV right now, they're just speaking.
Well, yeah. But the thing is, I could go on public access, or I could do a blog, there's a lot of other ways I can get my face out there, and the same would apply to you.
It's not to get the face out there, it's because I'm in the dialogue, I'm in this conversation in this room, I should be shown on the TV just as equal as you.
Yeah.
That just shows the blatant disrespect to the speaker.
The only thing that I'm concerned about is for 20 years I've been on this council, and I've worked hard to preserve this audience comment, and I have to say that one of the biggest threats right now to the audience comment is having people come and talk about stuff that's not city of Renton business, because pretty soon the council will just decide, "Well, we're going to have to reduce the number of audience comments, because it's just too much time spent on non-city business."
Can I focus time for me?
Yeah, your time is coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I might, I think Mr. Bellomio, I believe you're still a candidate for the Seattle City Council, am I correct?
I am.
So, we do have in our policy, you can read that, that we do limit the ability in our council meetings for candidates for office.
I never said anything about office. This is so far from Seattle, what are you trying to allude to?
Are you a candidate for the city council or not?
Are you saying that because I'm running, I can't speak here about-
As a candidate for political office, we do restrict people who are during- in the middle of their campaigns to come here and use this forum.
I'm not running for- I never even- you're the one mentioning it. No one at home knows that I'm running for city council until you mentioned that. I never brought that up once.
You're here in Renton.
Yeah. No one votes for Seattle in Renton.
Campaigning for something you want on TV so that I'm- who knows why you want on TV?
Are you TV?
You're here to address the council.
I do show on TV to Seattle.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not Seattle.
I just want to let you know, that's- Mr. Bellomio is a candidate for the Seattle City-
Okay. Thank you. Next is Alex Zimmerman.
Does that restrict me from speaking?
Yes, your time is up.
No, I mean, because I'm running for council.
Oh, not at all.
Hi, guys, my name is Alex Zimmerman, and I'm very happy to spoke with you, because half of my life I spent with Soviet Union empire, in the Soviet Union communists and KGB. So, I give you good news right now, guys. You're more dangerous than Nazi and communist, and I have good experience, and my family have good experience with Gestapo and Nazi. You thousand are more dangerous. Communist and Nazi have a constitution. When you go against system, you will be killed. If we have a constitution for 200 year, what is give a chance, speak to everybody? Give a chance, use as freedom of speech, who is this for 200 year? What is we come to your chamber for one particular reason? For example, Mercy Palmer is a present in Don- in Dombowski Committee, and she not give a chance speak, zero. You understand? We want talking? No. We don't speak nothing. She sit and see us for many months. Ask her how many time we can speak in transportation committee, when we have right speak like a citizen. She never stand up and talk, "Guys, come on." See, Renton have five minute, you never give a zero. You give to zero to people like we, in one talking. So, this good example, what is we come to you? We come to you because you involve in this business, in city business. She's in city business. She's a council. Who not protect not only us, she not protect 100,000 people? Because every 100,000 peoples from Renton can come to her committee, what is she present in post to be speak, this is never happen. Dombowski block, everybody, she nice quiet sit down. It's about council business, about city business. You guys very primitive, because you represent 100,000 people. What is you do it now, in your conversation, your argument, what is you protect yourself so we go to 77 channel, or somebody? Why you don't doing like Nazi did or communist? You know what it mean? You have policeman, one your word, and I will be in jail forever. Kill me inside like did Nazi or communist KGB. Is it? It's very simple, guys. You right now very close to this. You thinking you only talking BS? It's not about BS, guys. It's about what has happened in America for last 30 year. Guy, one guy, old man, last Monday talk about this, come America back. Are you understand what is you doing? No, you don't understand. You like a zombie. No, are you zombie? No. You doing this for particular reason, for survive, for your asses, personal interest, because when you have a people interest, you talk, "Guys, more people come, more people talk about everything what is supposed to be, is good for everybody. It's America about." What you doing something that is not only stupid, it's a pure idiotic. You understand? You defend this territory. Every city who we go and talking, we come talking to dozen city, have limit. You can speak about everything, 3 minute minimum. Seattle have 2 minute. For last 2 year, we change Seattle. 2 year ago, what we become, Seattle don't want talking like you. We change Seattle right now, everybody can doing this. Right now, King Country Council. We need speak about King Country Councils, very interesting. Gossip 4 time in row. Chair of Council position. Jenny Hock, I live in Bellevue. 15 year, never Republican woman represent a size, never council, chair of council. Never, for 15 years. 300,000 people ignore for 15 years. How is this possible? It's because you guys. You very nice, you very smart. So, we right now have system who totally dead. We don't have more constitution, we don't have more government, we have a bunch of mafia, a crook, a bandido, who control everything. So, this, you thousand are more than dangerous than communist or Nazi. You understand? Because we have a constitution for 200 years, 200 year, how many country have constitution for 200 year? What is America did? In 200 year ago, American clear all this dirty aristocrat from another country who control Americans.[1689.14] So right now, time for doing same. But you identical like English aristocrat 200 year ago. Because what is you doing right now in one control power? Who control power? Control money. It's very simple. And absolutely power come to absolutely corruption is exactly what has happened in this country. Why we collapse in 2007? Because it's exactly what has happened? When a bunch of crook control power, control money, put this money in their pocket. 400 people on 10 trillion dollars. Are you know statistic? 400 people on 10 trillion dollars. You know what is mean 10 trillion dollars? It GDP almost half of Europe. You understand about talking? It's a ton of money. Is this exactly because you? Because each of you when stand up...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
No, it's eight second I have.
No, your time is up.
What does this mean?
It means your time is up.
Oh, this good to do. Okay, see you next Monday.
Howard McComber?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
Since he was addressing me in particular, I want to say that I try really hard to represent the people that elect me. And I think people know that. Last Tuesday, when I walked into the farmer's market, the very first people that saw me wanted to talk about this situation. And everyone at the market wanted to talk about it and they said, what are you guys going to do? This is ridiculous that you have to sit through these guys. They're not even from Renton. They don't represent us. What... We feel so sorry for you. And I mean, I'm not kidding. Five, six, seven people approached me about it. I think we're doing what they want. And I do try to represent, I think we all try to represent the people that have elected us, which are the citizens of Renton.
Bravo. You absolutely bravo. Yeah, you how many people talk to you?
Mr. Zimmerman, I want you to be quiet. Okay? You've had your five minutes and your time is up. Go ahead, Ms. Palmer.
So I really think that we are doing what we want and unfortunately, I totally agree with Randy. What's going to happen is the only way... It's going to change how we have audience comment, which we have fought to keep at five minutes for our people. Our people don't want to listen to this every Monday night. That's what the... They were saying to me loud and clear, and I didn't invite it because I wasn't here last Monday. So I just needed to put that out there.
Well, as you know, the council has the authority to decide who and when and how much you're going to listen to. So that's something certainly the council can bring up at any time.
Thank you.
Okay? Mr. McComber?
This is Howard McComber, live in Renton. Let me make one quick comment on that, just for a second. And that is I appreciate your patience in the situations that are there. And something has to be done and I'm sure that appropriate things will occur. Now, talking to you about something that I've talked to you about before, and this has to do with my Highlands. One of the situations that we're having right now is that the interest rates are starting to move up. We have all sorts of things. I won't go through those. I'm not sure I understand the mentality, but I do know that the interest rates are going up, which is making affordability more difficult for people in general, just because the housing prices... What counts is the monthly payment. The monthly payment's getting tough. So I have some proposals that are working in the works. And I'm meeting with Chip on Monday and we're doing all sorts of stuff working. But the thing that I'm concerned about just upfront is the amount of affordable housing that we have, but most especially in the Sunset area. The city has put in a tremendous amount of money and things into our Sunset area. We're putting, I think, $57 million right now into the Sunset area, which is very important and it's improving our area tremendously, which is important. But it's also important that we have affordable housing there. The housing we have there is generally affordable housing. No, it's affordable housing. We have affordable housing, need more affordable housing in the area. And we need to have owner occupancy because owner occupancy, the people who own their houses care a lot. They come down here, they work, they're involved in the community and so it works on that basis. And so I'm just stumping right now for us to keep moving ahead on getting the affordable housing going and working out details. No one has all the right answers. It takes negotiating and getting things worked out so we have something that's workable. And this particular group cares a lot about Renton. We've worked out a lot of things in the future and I'm planning on working out in the future. But I think most important is that we take care of our people, all the people, and that we take care of the folks who've been around in Renton a long time. And we take care of our very diverse group that live in the Highlands. It's really fun. The Highlands, we have all sorts of people dressed in all sorts of ways. It's their habitual... I mean, it's their traditional dress. We have all sorts of things there. It's a wonderful place to live. And we just want to encourage that to go ahead on all front. So you'll be hearing more about this, but I just want to thank you for your support in making the Highlands a better and better place to live. And we just want to make sure we keep on the affordability as much as we can.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
We really appreciate too your commitment. I mean, you continue to work with staff. We want to work with you to figure out some of these issues. We agree with you that there's lots of needs and so we appreciate your total commitment to the process.
I'm going to make a rebuttal at that last. This group is... We negotiate all the time. We work out. We don't always see things. I so means we're going to work things out. But this group, I see you at every function, you're volunteering. You show us volunteers how to volunteer. And you care a great deal. And the general population of this town is very pleased with your efforts. We don't always agree, but I have to agree that everybody thinks every one of you is doing the best job you personally know how to do to make this city the best it can possibly be. So all on that boat together and you're doing a wonderful job.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you, Howard.
Nancy, I'm going to do my best not... In fact, I'm not going to try to ruin your last name. I'm going to have you come to the podium and...
Tell us who you are.
I know you're already upset about a parking issue, so I didn't want to compound it.
Okay. My name is Nancy Sehudo. I'm the owner of Ben's Loan. And we have... We got all these notices. It's from the city. It's about the 200 block Bean Avenue, which is owned by the city, right next to our building, that we can no longer park there because it's going to turn into a four... Or to a two-hour parking as of the 16th, which was last week. We've been there since 1980. Built the building. It used to be on South Third, little baby place. But we have some safety issues that I'd like to bring up to you and have you... I know this decision's already been made, but if you would relook at this, the clocks change in a month. We have, you know, a tremendous amount of guns, ammunition, and so we have everything that bad people want. And so they see us leave the building. We've... Two or three of us have been approached even where we are. And we always go out in twos or threes, but still with... There's a lot of crime over there in that lot. I think that it's a safety issue that we're really worried about because of there's been stabbing, shootings, and cars broken into. So I'm quite concerned about that. I don't know if this is can be relooked at or if we could just have permits at least or some kind of a pass. I don't know what we could do. But there's eight cars usually. We're open seven days a week. On Sundays, we have very few cars. But it's... I'm not sure. I think there would have... Must have been a complaint, but some of the owners on that street that I've addressed and seen, they don't... They were not aware of this. Even the little lady that gives the tickets wasn't aware of this. So until it happened, she just said she just enforces the law and that's all she does. So I'm assuming that you knew about this or there's a committee that made this decision. I wasn't at the city council meetings, but I'm coming to address you now to have this... If we could just relook at this or if there's something you could do for us.
Yes. So Nancy, we're going to meet with our staff to discuss the issues, particularly how it's impacting your business, and we'll definitely get back with you.
Okay.
Anything can be changed. We're sensitive to the fact that parking is an issue and a need and so...
It's usually not full. I don't know... I'm not sure what the... If there's a sounders game, the brilleter is full when we leave, like around 5 o'clock on whatever night that's going to be. But it's usually... I don't know what the concern... We park. Our cars are always backed up right beside the building, our building, so that nobody's in the other rows or anything. I've asked them all to do that so that it's pretty clear who we are and why we're there and we're backed up so that there's not... You know, people don't get banged doors and things like that too, so...
Well, we're going to definitely discuss this and we'll get back with you and also back to the council on what the issue is.
Okay. We do have three women and I'm kind of worried about that. It's just we do carry... Most of us all have guns, but still, you know, you still want to be confronted. Three guys jump you, doesn't matter if you've got 10 guns.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thanks for... Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, council. We have five items for your consideration. Does any member have an item you want polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
And no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a finance committee report.
Finance committee report, reclassified facility technician position. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation. Oops. I apologize. I believe I read the wrong report. Is that the report, Mr. Person?
It's the reclassification for the facility technician position.
Okay. My apologies. I'll start. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to upgrade one facility technician position grade A17 to a facility electrical technician position grade A19, resulting in an annual increase of $2,750. Now budget among... Budget adjustments will be necessary at this time. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second? Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Zwicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Community Services does have a committee report.
Community Services Committee report, amending city code regarding decriminalization of alcohol in parks. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an ordinance amending the park rules to decriminalize opening or consuming alcohol in parks in order to be consistent with state law. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, just a little clarification before anyone starts celebrating thinking that this means that we can start drinking alcohol in city parks. A little housekeeping is all it is. It came to our attention that the legislature changed the law and decriminalized alcohol consumption in open spaces, city parks. State says it's just a civil violation as compared to a criminal violation. So they'll no longer be subject to criminal sanctions or jail time, but they still are subject to civil infraction because it's against the law to drink in the parks. And with that, I move that council concur with the Community Services Committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Community Services Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for the explanation because that is kind of confusing. Okay. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one ordinance for first reading.
The ordinance regards the decriminalization as just discussed. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 2-9-8 of chapter nine Parks Commission of Title II Commissions and Boards of Renton Municipal Code by reducing the penalty for possessing or consuming alcohol in parks to a civil violation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the ordinance be advanced to the next council meeting.
Second?
For second and final read at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want to know why the camera's not on me. Oh, that's okay. Moving on to... Moving on to new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I can't resist commenting on that, but I suspect if you turned around, the camera might...
Let's see. Where were we? New business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay, first of all, while I'm remembering, I want to announce that there will be an executive session following the council meeting. Be approximately 20 minutes. And the subject is labor negotiations and there will be no action taken at that executive session. And then secondarily, I just want to announce, I guess I want to remind the council that next Monday is 5th Monday, so there's no meetings. Okay? And then October 7th, I have a committee of the whole meeting to announce. It'll be in the seventh floor conferencing center, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. We're going to cover three issues. First is regional issues. Second is emerging issues in community services. And the third is coverage is here in King County Public Health Presentation. And all of these will be briefing only. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Aviation Committee will meet this Thursday, which is September 26th, at 4 o'clock in the council conference room. Two items on the agenda, emerging issues in transportation. And the second is Performance-Based Navigation, RAC, which is the Renton Airport Advisory Committee Recommendation. And that is a briefing only. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll announce for Councilman Breyer that on October 7th, in the council conference room, the finance committee will meet at 4:00 p.m. And there's four items, vouchers, emerging issues in revenue streams, housing authority, lease addendum for the Edland property, and a request to fulfill an admin secretary one position at step D. And then at 5:00 p.m., the Public Safety Committee will meet in the council conference room. And we have two items, police department staffing, update briefing, and emerging issues in public safety. And this evening, we had a very interesting briefing on staffing in the fire department that I thought was well worthwhile for the entire council to see. And also the... I'm sure I say it right. And also the, be sure I say it right, the Class A burn prop for Fire Station 14 that we had a briefing on today. I would like to, I make move that we refer that, the prop burning to committee of the whole, and overall staffing needs of the city in the future to committee, committee of the whole.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that topics, you're talking about firefighter.
Well, fire, the, when I'm talking.
Staffing.
The fires, well, not just fire staffing, but the whole issue, and I'll explain it here in a second. What we found out today is that 50 of our firefighters are 50 years old or older. They can retire at 53. But the state retirement board says the average retirement age is 56 and a half months. So we're looking at a lot of people who could be retiring. The same issue is throughout the whole city. And so I just think it's important that the council is aware of, of this issue that's coming in the future, and I don't know what we can do about it. But I think it's something that I found very interesting, the rest of my committee members found interesting. So.
Okay, so we'll have Human Resources prepare a report for the full council. And the second item is the prop burning facility at Station 14.
That was, that was very, very interesting. I think it's something that.
So all, all of those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Okay. That's motion carries.
And then, just, just in new news, I would invite, on Saturday, the 28th, this Saturday, our score jail facility is going to have a employee pitcher, and they've asked me to barbecue for that. I have a councilman from Auburn that's gonna help me and one of my neighbors. But any council member that would like to maybe barbecue in the rain is more than welcome to attend with me and help. Thank you.
I didn't hear a second, so we'll just move on. Mr. Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Zwicker.
No new business.
Mr. Taylor.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to audience comments, anybody that wanted to address the council?
Mr. Avery, City of Renton. I, I just want to say, thank you very much, first of all, for showing a tremendous amount of grace in dealing with the public comment period. I've struggled over the last several weeks with the situation with this non-resident group coming in, occupying a lot of time, in my opinion ridiculing the council, the city staff members. Their agenda is clearly not something that has to do with city business. As you're aware, I'm very, very concerned about the public speaking time that we do have. I feel that it has a tremendous amount of value to the city residents, especially the amount of time that we are graciously allotted, both during the first comment period and then afterwards. And I just want to kind of reiterate that that is a very valuable piece of democracy that I feel like we need to preserve. And I understand the struggles that you have as a council, the city, in dealing with, or how to deal with these kind of situations, because I, I suspect that this won't be the last time, and there'll be other groups that will come up and try to utilize and get air time at the expense of your time and the city's valuable time. I had emailed this particular group last week, actually a couple of weeks ago, and council member Corman, I said the exact same thing, public access television. I gave them the link to that and suggested blogging and all of the other avenues of communication that citizens can use to affect change in their government. So as you talk about this public speaking time, I just want to let you know that I, I know that the citizens do value it, those who respect it and want to use it for the right reasons. And I just ask that you keep that in mind when you discuss about how this is gonna move forward in the future. It's a difficult situation, but, you know, just understand that it is something that I think most of the people in this city have a tremendous amount of respect for and value, and not just that, but your time. And I don't think that I would have been as graceful as you've been. But I commend you for, for that. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Corman.
Oh, yeah, yeah, except that I need my cheat sheet, so I don't get it. I thought I'm not doing an audience comment. Oh, there is another audience comment. That'll give me time to practice here.
Okay, my name's Paul Watt, and I am a citizen here in City of Renton. I've been since 1956. And the situation, I thought Mr. Avery did a very great comment on that, and it was only because he stood up faster than me, because I was gonna come up and say something too. And I would, I feel very, I felt very put out myself because of what Ms. Palmer had to put up with, and basically what I consider almost a personal attack. And the way they go about doing it, I highly disagree with. They do have a point, I believe. And I would think that if the city council here would be, do maybe do nothing but sit down and write a letter to King County Council explaining that you have this problem, and if they have some kind of an answer for it, and if they give an answer back, that should end it all. You show it to these people and say, if this is what you're here to talk about in the future, we've already heard it, here's what the city council of King County has to say, or the county council has to say about it, and if you have any problems, you should be taking it to them and not to us and wasting our time. Thank you for your listening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes to discuss labor negotiations, with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that we recess into executive session for about 20 minutes on labor negotiations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.